Good afternoon. I'd like to call Allegheny County Council to order please rise to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Jared, please take small.
Ms. Bennett.
Here.
Mr. Bekowski.
Here.
Mr. DiMarco.
Here.
Mr. Dewar.
Here.
Ms. Filiagi.
Here.
Mr. Fatoulis.
Here.
Ms. Hallam.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Macy.
Here.
Ms. Nakareti-Chapkus.
Here.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Here.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Here.
Ms. Pritsio. Mr. Walton.
Here.
Thank you. President Katina.
Here.
All 15 members are present.
Okay, well, we begin with proclamations slash certificates, 12643-23.
A proclamation recognizing Edgar Snyder and his longevity helping others sponsored by councilmember Macy.
Who's that guy?
God. That was you?
Well, it's certainly an honor and a privilege to recognize Edgar Snyder for his many, many years of legal expertise, helping others, and of course, being a friend. I first met Edgar when I was a little old steelworker in Duquesne, and Edgar had an office up on Grant Street. He was our solicitor. I happened to be on the board of the Duquesne Works Employees Federal Credit Union, and as things went, the mill shut down, everybody went their way, and I would see Edgar every once in a while up at the Tea Garden up at Squirrel Hill because I do like Chinese food.
So do I.
And we'd always exchanged pleasantries, and he was always a gentleman, and I'm sure he still is. But what I most remember is this laid-off steelworker would call Edgar because I knew him. I figured, hey, maybe he could give me some advice, maybe he could help me, and he did. I never got a bill in the mail. Imagine that. It's a lawyer, but a lawyer that is very philanthropic, and his helping others just goes on to this day. Edgar, whereas you have not lived today until you have done something for someone who can never repay you. That was a quote from the English writer John Bunyan, and it personifies, personifies, is that a word?
Personifies.
Personifies, yeah. That's all right. I'm still learning. The talented attorneys that Allegheny County and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania have to, who contribute invaluable to our communities. And whereas Edgar Snyder's father, a Russian immigrant, and his mother, a Pittsburgh native, stressed the importance of hard work and good education, they gave him and his siblings two options for their future employment, asking, are you going to be a lawyer or are you going to be a doctor? Because of his knack for winning arguments and his success on his college debate team, Mr. Snyder felt that the legal profession was a good fit for him. After graduating from Pennsylvania State University, he enrolled in the University of Pittsburgh School of Law to earn his Juris Doctorate degree. And whereas after graduating from law school, Mr. Snyder opened his own storefront office in Duquesne. Everybody got started there, right? Setting up a shop across the street from the steel mill so the workers would see his light on after their shifts. At the time, he was also serving as county council, county.
Counties.
Yeah, Allegheny, don't do that. Allegheny County Assistant Public Defender and rose quickly among the ranks of criminal defense attorneys. He represented several high-profile clients, including Stanley Haas, in what many consider to be Western Pennsylvania's trial of the century. And whereas despite his success, Mr. Snyder's passion was for helping injured people and victims with disabilities. Through his storefront operation, he got to know many of these clients well, and Mr. Snyder was determined to expand his personal injury practice. And whereas in 1982, Mr. Snyder founded the law firm Edgar Snyder &amp; Associates with the goal of helping injured people in Western Pennsylvania fight insurance companies. Soon after, Mr. Snyder's television ads about a free legal consultation made him a household name across the region. As Mr. Snyder's reputation as a caring but tough injury attorney grew, so did his law firm. Whereas over the past years of practicing law, Mr. Snyder has made impressive strides in practicing it as a practicing attorney and is proud that more than 40 years later, the firm continues to champion accident victims. He was selected to the Pennsylvania Super Lawyers List, an honor awarded to the top 5% of the statewide lawyers, and he has received the Trib Total Media Reader's Choice Award for Best Attorney in the City from 2010 to 2016. Mr. Snyder was awarded with the lifelong title of Penn State Alumni Fellow, which was given in recognition of his professional accomplishment and is an award of the highest honor given by Penn State Alumni Association. He also received a 225 anniversary medallion from the University of Pittsburgh for his outstanding contributions to their professional fields as an individual who continues to contribute to the success of the university and the students. Whereas not only Mr. Snyder was passionate about practicing his law, he is devoted to serving, like most of us do, the community. He is an active member of the Allegheny County Bar Association, Pennsylvania Bar Association, Pennsylvania Association of Justice, and American Association for Justice. He also is a President's Club member of Western Pennsylvania Trial Lawyers Association. And whereas Mr. Snyder has lived by his words, in which he believes that if you are fortunate enough to be successful in business, you have a responsibility to give back to the community. The law firm represents many victims of accidents and sees firsthand the devotion and devastation that happens with these accidents. Mr. Snyder and his firm established the Edgar Snyder Associates Foundation, which partners with local organizations to help keep Western and Central Pennsylvania communities safe and supported. Whereas due to the philanthropic efforts of the community, Mr. Snyder has received PNC's Community Builders Award and the Emmanuel Specter Memorial Award, which recognizes exemplary service to the community. Now therefore be it resolved that I Allegheny County Councilmember Bob Macy and all of the members do recognize Attorney Edgar Snyder for his unwavering dedication to his clients and enhancing the law practice in Pennsylvania. And I must say, all of his philanthropic work he has done in all of our communities, it doesn't matter who you are, where you live, he's there to help. Congratulations.
You got that out of the law firm. They wrote it. I think everybody has one of those in the law firm. It's very nice. But first of all, I want to thank everybody here on council. I really appreciate this proclamation, and I especially appreciate you, Bob, because as we said before this started, I remember, I don't know whether any of them knew you that long, but I've probably known you longer than all of these people have known you.
They know me enough.
They know you now, but I knew you then.
They've known him long enough.
And he said, I started my law practice in 1966 in Duquesne, in Duquesne, Pennsylvania. I opened up a storefront. I was having the opportunity and looking, say, how could I build a practice and where I can start? And I had some family that lived in Duquesne, and they said, well, we're going to let you hang out a shingle at an insurance agency on Grant Street in Duquesne, Pennsylvania. And I remember later the owner of the agency said, he doesn't know anybody in Duquesne. He doesn't know anybody out here. I'll give him maybe two to four weeks before he'll be gone. And I wasn't gone. I stayed there. I timed it, so I used to come out. I don't know whether people thought I worked in the mill and then came there and set up my shingle or not, but it was right out in front of the, at the time when Duquesne Works was there. And that really foundationally started me on the road. You know, people know me now as a personal injury lawyer, advertising over 40 years. But it really, when you go back and you start to look at where you come from and what makes a difference. Duquesne, Pennsylvania at that time, the Mon Valley, it really made a difference for me. I laugh because he was a steelworker and he was in the credit union, and I was the lawyer for the credit unions, a lot of different credit unions in the Mon Valley at that time. And I really got to know everybody, and it really helped me. And when I think now and I look at this and what you had to say, and I look back and I say, it's really nice to have fame, and it's really nice to be well-known, and it's nice to be on television, but you really have to go back to where it all starts. And where it all started for me was back there in the Mon Valley. And in fact, it wouldn't be fair for me not to, when you're talking about county council and things of that nature, without the help of Leonard Stacey. I would not have really had the break that I had. He was the county commissioner at that time, and he appointed me as one of the first appointees, not as the public defender, but one of the first public defenders that worked in the public defender's office. And it's very interesting at that time because I think they had an 67, the 80 lawyers. We had four lawyers doing all the work in Allegheny County, but that's where I got my experience. And then when I had the opportunity, I was a criminal lawyer for 17 years, and then I got into, in the beginning, when you were starting to allow to practice law by advertising. And I got myself on television, and I remember, I remember everybody saying, you better be good because you're not exactly, you know, the best-looking guy on television right now. Bill Burns, if anybody, if you all remember, Bill Burns and I used to joke, and he used to say to me, Edgar, I knew him, and he used to say to me, I'll give you a lot of credit for going on television looking the way you do. And it's always stuck in my mind. But anyway, building this law firm, and I really have to pay homage because I figured it out, but you're all here, and most of you are in the third generation. Michael, second generation, myself in the first generation of the law firm, and it really gives me tremendous pleasure to stand here, not just as a lawyer, but as a lawyer who started a law firm, and we're still doing really good things in Allegheny County. We stress in that law firm, okay? We stress giving back to community. I have always believed, you said it in the proclamation, and it's true, if you are lucky enough to be successful, you've got a duty and an obligation to give back. How can you give back? You can go to community, you can get involved in charitable endeavors, whether it's with professional athletes in Pittsburgh, whether it's on the local level, whether it's in the law firm. We do a lot all the time because I believe in giving back. So I am very appreciative. I'm humbled, honestly. I'm humbled to have this opportunity. I thank all of you. I thank you, Bob, for doing this. It means a lot to me. Growing up here, living, being a lifelong resident of Allegheny County, and to be able to come before the county council, this is, it's true privilege. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. My pleasure. Our pleasure.
Mr. Macy, may I be joined as a co-sponsor?
Absolutely.
Oh, we all are? Okay. Oh, good.
Thank you, Paul.
Specifically, Paul.
Bring him for you.
Oh, yeah.
If it's not after, I'll do it after.
That's good.
Can we do that, please? I watch it so bad.
If you all, if you all point, if you all point for me, we'll get a plug wrapped.
That's so bad, you don't even know.
It'll be like my endorsement of you all, and you'll be automatically, I'm not even sure if you'll get a lack of money. I'll give money for you.
Yeah, we know, see, that is how we're taking them.
You ready? There we go.
All of us go and point.
We'll get one.
All right, everybody.
Ready? One, two, three. Okay, one more. Okay, ready? One, two, and three.
All right, can we do it now? There's no fee unless we get money for you.
I always wanted to do that. I love it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I thought you did, thank you so much.
I should say everybody in voice. I shouldn't want to take it all the time.
Cindy is. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I know your voice, know that.
I'm just wanting to highlight my career.
You were famous in Luke.
That's some high praise.
He was the guy on the other end of the red. What's happening, Red?
Five sixty out of ten.
Edgar?
Thank you so much. If you look better in person.
Still works, okay, as long as it still works.
The remaining proclamations will be read into the record as a representative from 412 Thrive is unable to be here this evening. 12642-23.
A proclamation declaring April 12, 2023, to be 412 Thrive Day in Allegheny County, sponsored by councilmembers DiMarco, Hallam, Dewar, Katina, Pritsio, Bennett, Macy, and Nakareti-Chapkus.
12644-23.
A proclamation recognizing National Vietnam War Veterans Day, sponsored by councilmember DiMarco.
12645-23.
A proclamation recognizing Bethel Park Outstanding Citizen of the Year Pamela Tiano, sponsored by councilmember Dewar.
12646-23.
A proclamation recognizing Bethel Park Outstanding Citizen of the Year Lisa Jenkins, sponsored by councilmember Dewar.
12647-23.
A proclamation recognizing the Honorable Christine L. Donahue for being the recipient of the 2023 Judge Robert E. Dower Award, sponsored by councilmembers Katina and Macy. A proclamation recognizing County Executive Rich Fitzgerald on being the recipient of the 2023 James R. McGregor Award, sponsored by councilmembers Katina and Macy.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on agenda items?
We did have a couple of people sign up. First up is Erica Rochi-Bressilers.
Did I say that correctly? Thanks.
Good evening. I am Erica Rochi-Bressilers. I live on the north side of Pittsburgh, and my professional background is as a retirement plan actuary. I'm here today to speak in support of motion 1264-23, which affirms the need for strong ethical rules and practices for the Retirement Board of Allegheny County. This is an important step to building the trust of plan members and taxpayers. Last month, the Retirement Board of Allegheny County tabled a motion to bring ethical standards of the plan in line with those required for plans receiving state funding, although our plan does not receive state funding. This change would help close a current avenue for individual board members or staff to personally benefit at the expense of plan members, taxpayers, and the public trust. Leading a $1 billion pension fund with promises two times that amount is a huge responsibility. Plan members, residents, and businesses of this county need to be assured that those responsible for this plan are always focused on their fiduciary responsibility. Moving forward, this motion voices council's support for building the foundational and transparent guardrails to ensure that board members and staff are working solely for the public good. I urge county council to pass motion 12641-23. Thank you.
Next.
Next up is County Controller Corey O'Connor.
Thank you. I was here for the same motion, but I'm glad Edgar was here. Somebody just hit my car in the county parking lot, so. No, I'm just kidding. I'm good. I'm good. I'm here to also speak on behalf of that motion. As everybody knows, as a board member, I introduced that motion at last month's meeting for our board solicitor to consolidate ethic provision as a policy that we could vote on and adopt at hopefully next month's board meeting. These are simple, common sense provisions that countless other governments across our Commonwealth have had, and I think it's time that we do the same. These reforms would keep the retirement board from employing professional service contractors who contribute to political campaigns for elected countywide officials. Codifying these standards as retirement board policy is necessary to ensure that our employees and retirees, that we're making sound investment decisions for the retirement fund's future and not for our own benefits. This will also allow us to avoid the perception of pay-for-play politics. We can't keep getting by by saying it's always been this way or everybody does it. When it comes to our basic ethical obligations, but taxpayers first, we can do better and we must do better. Allegheny County and its residents benefit from more transparent and open government, and including these straightforward ethics reforms will go a long way in helping us. So thank you very much for your consideration, and thank you again for your support.
Thank you. Approval of minutes? Right now is a known issue with the cover sheet on the minutes. The corrected version obviously has been requested. We'll be incorporating this in the minutes when it is received. So is there a motion to approve the minutes? So moved. Motion has been made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Presentation of appointments?
We have none.
Unfinished business. Committee on Parks for the second reading. 12579-23.
An ordinance to the County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania authorizing the acceptance of the Allegheny Land Trust's offer to donate 43 parcels of land located adjacent to the county's North Park, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Councilman Paul Mary.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. We met last week, and this is obviously a nice opportunity to extend some of the park out there in the North Park area, and this met with the affirmative recommendation, Mr. President, and I move for approval.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. Jared, roll call vote, please.
On the motion approved, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Mr. Dewar.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulis.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 15, no zero. The bill passes.
12631-23.
An ordinance to the County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania authorizing the continued use of real property in the county's Deer Lakes Park for purposes of farming by Beacon Farms, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Councilman Paul Mary.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. We met last week, and this is obviously a nice opportunity to extend some of the park out there in the North Park area, and this met with the affirmative recommendation, Mr. President, and I move for approval.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. Jared, roll call vote, please.
On the motion approved, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Mr. Dewar.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulis.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 15, no zero. The bill passes.
12630-23.
An ordinance to the County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania authorizing the continued use of a BMX bicycle facility in the county's South Park by South Park BMX Incorporated, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Councilman Paul Mary.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Again, this is a partnership that we've enjoyed over South Park for many, many years, and just happy to continue on with the good work those people do out there, and it's a wonderful facility for the youth of our community. And again, this met with a affirmative recommendation, Mr. President, and I move for approval.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing, none. Jared, please take a roll call vote.
On the motion approved, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Mr. Dewar.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulis.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 15, no zero. The bill passes.
12631-23.
An ordinance to the County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania authorizing the continued use of real property in the county's Deer Lakes Park for purposes of farming by Beacon Farms, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Councilman Paul Mary.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Again, this is another long-term commitment we've had from these good people out there at Deer Lakes for many, many years, and we're happy to renew our opportunity to serve them and to help them serve the people of Allegheny County. So, and again, this met with a affirmative recommendation, Mr. President, and I move for approval.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. Jared, please take a roll call.
On the motion approved, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Mr. Dewar.
Yes.
Ms. Filiagi.
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulis.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakareti-Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritsio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 15, no zero. The bill passes.
Are there any liaison reports this evening?
I apologize, we have one more.
Yeah, one more.
Sorry, did I miss it?
Yeah.
There it is. Okay, 12632-23.
An ordinance to the County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania authorizing the continued use of real property in the county's White Oak Park, known as Angora Gardens by UPMC Western Behavioral Health at Mon Yoc, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Councilman Paul Mary.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Again, these people do wonderful work out there. It's been going on for quite a while, and we're glad to renew our, excuse me, our contract with them in ensuing years. And again, we met with affirmative approval and recommendation, and I move for approval.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing, none. Jared, please take a roll.
On the motion approved, Ms. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Mr. Dewar.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 15, no zero. The bill passes.
Now liaison reports. Does anyone have a liaison report this evening?
President Katina, two. First, I'm not a member of parks, but I wanted to thank the members of all of the Friends groups who attended the last parks meeting, was the first annual review of those groups in accordance with the rewritten ordinance that councilmembers, councilmembers Pritzio, myself, Paul Mary, and then Councilwoman Kirk rewrote. So I wanted to thank all of the Friends groups who came, a couple of new groups that showed up. So I wanted to thank them for their attendance and their participation and their work, working to better our county parks. Second, I wanted to give a liaison report as the now only county council member on the, on the Board of Elections. So I had my first meeting with Elections Director David Boye, getting me up to speed about everything before the May 16 primary. Just wanted to highlight a few things. First and foremost, poll workers, I know that's always a big deal. Right now, there are 4,741 individuals already assigned to polls across the county. According to Dave, the poll worker recruitment is going very, very well, but we could always use more, specifically in the city, Terenum, Turtle Creek, Upper St. Clair, West Mifflin, Westview, and Whitehall. So if any of those areas are near your district, Upper St. Clair is in mine, if you know anyone who'd be interested in working at a poll on Election Day, I'd ask that you please reach out inside your communities to help fill those spots. In addition to that, mail-in ballot timeline. So right now, everything is set to go. We are still, however, waiting on a couple of unresolved litigation for some of the potential folks appearing on our ballots, and some of those cases could go to the Commonwealth Court. So until those cases are resolved, we cannot send out the mail-in ballots yet, but once they are, we will be getting out the mail-in ballots as soon as possible. So just wanted to give those updates. Thank you, President Katina.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Hearing, none. We'll move into new business. 12637-23.
An ordinance to the County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania directing the referendum question regarding the amendment of Article 3, Section 5b of the Home Rule Charter of Allegheny County, which places term limits on only the chief executive, be placed on the November 7, 2023, a general election ballot, sponsored by councilmembers Dewar and Filiaji.
That will go to government reform. 12639-23.
An ordinance to the Council of the County of Allegheny ratifying amendments to the Allegheny County Health Department's Rules and Regulations, Article 2, entitled Needle Exchange Program, sponsored by the chief executive.
That will go to Health and Human Services. 12640-23.
An ordinance to the Council of the County of Allegheny ratifying amendments to the Allegheny County Health Department's Rules and Regulations, Article 23, entitled Universal Blood Lead Level Testing, sponsored by the chief executive.
New business, motions. 12641, did I miss?
I apologize on that last bill. Health and Human Services for that one as well?
Health and Human Services.
Thank you.
Sorry. I'm ahead of myself. New businesses, motions. 12641-23.